They actually bend over.
Okay, stop video. Maybe not so much of the ceiling, can you?
It's me.
Yes, we do.
Maybe.
You do work here.
There you go. About four meetings, got it.
Oh, okay.
The video, I'm on Black Magic. That's correct. My test speaker, so I'm on the microphone array.
Yeah. Hello.
Hi. Hi Sylvia and Sherry.
Hi Heather.
Hi Heather.
There. Fantastic.
We'll say we're calling a meeting to order now at five zero five.
Trusty Thomas. Trusty Calhoun. Trusty Dopplemeyer. Dr. Little, present. Trusty Lopez, present. President Roberts.
Present.
Dr. Curry.
Moving on to item two, approval of the closed session agenda. Is there any motions?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Can we have a verbal?
Trusty Calhoun. Yes. Dr. Little? Yes. Trusty Lopez, yes. President Roberts?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Moving on to item three, request to address the board of trustees on closed session agenda matter. Are there any requests?
No.
Moving on to three point zero two, Compton CCD, Board of Trustees' future agenda items request. Do we have any requests at this time?
None at this time.
Trusty Calhoun.
Of course I do, but I'm gonna save it for the second half.
Okay. Moving on to item four, news that this closed session. And according to the development plan. At five zero seven. Were reconvene that open session at six thirteen P M. Will call from which.
Trusty Thomas, present. Trusty Calhoun, present. Trusty Dopplemeyer. Dr. Little, present. Trusty Lopez, present. President Roberts?
Present.
Dr. Curry?
Here. Moving on to item five point zero two, the five zero. Trusty Calhoun, can we meet us?
Everybody lies, everything stays cool, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Moving on to item six, reported action taken in closed session. But we have number four. Moving on to item seven, approval of the open session agenda. Is there a motion?
Probably will.
It's been moved by Dr. Little, seconded by Trusty Lopez. Is there any discussion of?
There's one, one correction to the agenda or one addition to the agenda regarding item number. Item number twelve point zero one, add trustee of Dr. Dopplemeyer presentation.
During the other discussion? Without any further discussion, can we please have the online vote?
We can have a yes vote.
Moving on to item eight, request to address the board of trustees on agenda and non-agenda matters. Eight point zero one, request to address the board of trustees on open session agenda matters.
Yes. We have Philip Hart.
Mister Hart?
Yes.
On a non-agenda item.
On a non-agenda item? You'll have three minutes of the, the. We could come to the first.
The name is Philip Hart. I live in my class, I don't have an address. Says the, that's the board of. My thing is for Compton College, I've gotten out of prison in two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty. Oh, two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four, my mother just passed away. But I knew I had to do something, I had to come to school to keep my mind. So I got enrolled, I enrolled in Long Beach City College and I enrolled here at twenty four units. And I will mind. But I did. I had a chance to take with both of the classes and went after all things, I chose this semester. I don't get that. I come to school here, there's so much opportunity here. I love the staff here, I love the program to get happy and I wish there would be more students, new students coming in. And I'd like to be a part of that, getting more students. They also have, maybe once a month have, we call the parole office comes here. And they have around the parole leaves. And I haven't seen anyone from that group of people, thirty, forty, seven registered, anybody out there. Hey, you've got some trade, you've got some education here. Better yourself, educational wise, and I think I might be. I very much appreciate. You're like my family. So that definitely same. My moment. Or that. Right. Thank you. Be careful on your skills.
Very old one.
Moving on to eight point zero two, Compton CCD, Board of Trustees' future agenda items request. Trustees. Trusty Calhoun.
Yes. Future agenda. We have a. All right, let me get it together. We have BP. Four, two, three, one. Which is a great change. Policy. And I think that this, even though we approved this policy. I think this policy is cock up. This policy needs to be changed. Somebody use me for an example. Last semester, I took a course. I received the grade. Last semester. Then all of a sudden, in my email. The teacher changed the grade from an A to an F. Second time I took this course. Changed it from an A to F, so of course I look at the board policy. Board policy says. You cannot go from a higher grade to a lower grade unless it's. Some kind of circumstances, right? You can go from a lower grade to a higher grade, which is more easier, right? So I'm reading the policy. And then so you have to do. You have to go through the process to get a grade change. So I did the process. Now, I wanted to know, this was after the semester ended. That I got the email about a grade change, semester had ended, new semester to be done. And so I went through the policy, you got steps to do in order to appeal, right? I appealed it. Nobody answered. Finally started sending it around. One response was, there was another student with the same last name as me. And the teacher got us mixed up. Really, you guys? I get online, the other person was in person. Same last name, Calhoun. I said, well, mistake there, then the teacher emailed me. And informed me. That when she was putting the grade in. She wasn't paying attention. She put the grade in the wrong, online, which was wrong. But if you add up by the curriculum of the teacher. I added up all the points. Right? This teacher has a curriculum. And when you add it up, you go by the points, by the points, I should have received a B or a C. So I had to do it all over again. And still no response. That we have received it, but I know they got it because it came from admissions. I gotta, you know, but it doesn't say what the next step is. You have to wait for the teacher. To reply to you. And if the teacher never replied to you, even though the teacher told you wait earlier. You out of luck. You are out of luck, this needs to be changed, you need to have the steps. The steps need to say when you file it. Somebody emails you back and we have received. Your grade change complaint, your. Your appeal. And then they should say how many days it takes for them to answer you. I thought I saw something like a hundred and eighty days, I could be wrong, because I was mad by this time. I, I, and so. This policy needs to be changed, because guess what, ladies and gentlemen? I'm supposed to graduate from Trade Tech. This year. By mid-March. Trade Tech was supposed to have. My transcripts. What, what's the date today? Mid-March has passed. So my name will not be in the book. As a possibility, I will not be walking across the stage. All because. Nobody else has responded to this grade change. And so if they're doing one student like that. You best believe that they're doing other students like that and other students just don't, are just so tired of it that they, they don't even appeal the grade. That either they take the class here again, or they go to another college. Because right now, if this don't get changed, guess what, I gotta take that class again. But I'm not taking that at Compton College. They have it at Trade Tech. And it's online. That mean. I will have to take the class again. At Trade Tech. And graduate in the summer. Because of the incompetency. And yes, I'm saying the word. And I love y'all. I love y'all. I love Compton College. I love Compton College. I went to college at seventy-three and I'm seventy-four now and I'm still in college, I went back to get my AA. At one class. One class. Now, I've talked to people. One person was out. They told me that they would give back, I'm not calling no name. Not at this time, but I'm gonna call names at the next board meeting. But at the next board meeting, I'm calling out the teacher's name. I'm not doing it right now. I still. Have not heard. This is unacceptable, Dr. Curry. Not just for me, but for any student. And all the time that I was in the class, every time this teacher emailed me. Instead of calling me a student, this teacher would call me a trustee. I'm your student, I'm not a trustee. I am a trustee, but I'm taking your class, I'm a student. Address me as a student and not a trustee. So what that, so that mean that that teacher is not aware of the cultural. I think somebody did something about culture up here. But was it maybe, don't, I talked about that word cultural. The teacher, somebody did it. The teacher should know us. Even if they don't see us and we're online. You, you can't tell me. You can't, you can't tell me that. But I guess you can because. Barbara Calhoun is not graduating. She got to go to class again. Unacceptable. This need to change, it needs to be put in there, the steps. How long it takes for a teacher to respond? How long it takes for the student to apply or whatever it is? This grade change policy is no good. It took, my opinion, is not even worth the paper that it's on. Because it doesn't help. A student at all. I don't want to say no more, because I'm, I'm doing my best not to get upset, because. It's hard going back, it's hard going to college, y'all. It's hard going to college, but it's hard to go back as you get older. And I kept saying, uh-uh, girl, go get your AA, go get your AA in labor law, girl, get that AA. I ain't gonna get a A or a B or a C. Look, you have to laugh, you have to laugh, you have to, because if I don't laugh, I'm gonna cry. If I don't laugh, I'm gonna cry, I think I already cried enough. But trust me, if I don't get it, and it's never changed, I just go to Trade Tech, give Trade Tech my money, because obviously Compton College don't want my money. And this goes on and on with the teachers. Now I understand. Why, why people do not want the students. To do a survey at the end of every semester. That. We ain't asking the survey to add the teacher's name. You could do a survey for all the students and they go to an independent person and in the end, it all comes out, so there should be a survey. We should have a survey, a student should be doing a survey. But just don't put the teacher's name, you just ask a certain questions, that's all. And in the end, we get the whole tally, everybody gets the whole tally on how the students felt about. Their thing, and I know I went overboard. Because you're looking at me like it's time to stop, it's okay. But that's the other thing. Future agenda, a survey. And it doesn't make any difference if they don't want it or not. It needs to be a survey. Evaluation, I'm sorry, thank you. Evaluation. Evaluation survey, I'm trying to be nice. Because I still love y'all, I think y'all do a good job. You got tough students. But still. And I still love Compton College. Thank you, Mister President.
Thank you, Trusty Calhoun. Trustees, are there any other future agenda items request? Moving on to item. Nine, for, for the trustee's meeting minutes. Is there motion, nine point zero one? Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the February?
So.
It's been moved by Trusty Calhoun, seconded by Dr. Little, is there any discussion? Do you know discussion, can we please have the online vote?
We can have a yes vote.
Moving on to nine point zero two, is there a motion to approve the minute?
So.
It's been moved by Trusty Calhoun, seconded by Trusty Lopez, is there any discussion? Please have the online vote.
We can have a yes vote.
Moving on to item ten, reports from representatives and employee organizations, ten point zero one, associated student government report, sovereignty view.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
So yeah, everyone, I'm serving, I'm doing A H D perfectly. So, thank you. Thank you, thank you, for dragging my mini change, so it's okay. So A H D, they went to Austin DC for their own conference, I just had to save behind the school. And I just had a lot of other things going on, so I'm kind of just, I couldn't know, but. So for the remainder of the semester, we're trying to do like one thing, we don't plan the students this year, because I know like sometimes. We can't do small events, but not all the students are coming with this, so we're trying to plan a carnival at April sixth. No, April ninth. From twelve to four, the carnival, the faculty, they're more than welcome to come. There's not, I think there's a carnival, like big rides, but there are going to be like carnival games, like. You know, we can play it in the live game, like a trick game, we're hoping to have a.
All crazy, yeah.
So. April ninth. But yes. See, yes. So like, some of the games, it'll be like, in the gym, like in front of the gym and in front of the. Those theaters, so like the students won't be, like if they have to go to characters, it just won't be in the big pond where everyone's walking and stuff, and it won't. People could still have access to the library, but it's gonna be like playful games, like inflatable basketball court, we'll have like the little inflatable rooms. Probably pretty big, but not too big, we still want kids, students with their education. We just got in contact with Kanes, we're hoping they can be a regional sponsor with us. They won't be at the event April ninth, but we don't know if they're gonna be a sponsor yet, we still have to figure out the policy, but they will be there just passing out the limited cards and stuff like that. So even from twelve to four. Faculty is more than welcome to come, but when it comes to the food, we do have a limited amount of food. For the remainder of, oh, and then we also, for that week is scary. But that's why we're having a carnival. So that pride will be doing. College show two. Students will reach, students or faculty will receive a gift card for the winner. And that whole week will just be doing stuff for the students, like Monroe Madden. Twin Day will be on Tuesday. Those things will be going on next month in April. May, we're having. E two events for mental health. We're still working on what we're gonna have, but everyone has like all these ideas, so we're planning to have something May thirteenth. And also May twenty eighth, because we really wanted. We didn't want mental health to just be on one day, we wanted it to be two days, so the students can participate, because it's something they. Going on, so mental health is something that we really wanted to participate in. We also are planning to help with black, black graduation. And hopefully for the white grad and white grad. And hopefully, if we do get a sponsorship for Kanes, they can also, Kanes can also participate with me in the black grad, white grad at the end of May. And also in May, we're having Asian Pacific Fair Church Month, so we're planning on that event. As well, so basically like our whole year, our whole goal this year is basically to like, like he was talking about, help more students come to camp, come to Compton College. And we know like activity that you have on campus brings students that want to come to the school, so. That's one thing, you know, we're just trying to make sure that the events turn out to be successful, that so that people can tell their. Kids or their families about it, so the students can come. Thank you.
Moving on to item ten, four, zero, two, academic senate report. Professor Lloyd. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, you all. I wanted to share with all of you that at the very beginning of the month, I had the opportunity to be on the Mount San Jacinto Federation site visiting. So having, having been on the exit interviews here, contributed to our I S R. And the listening to that college and being a part of that process, it's just really eye opening, and it kind of gives a person a different perspective. Of how like our accreditation processes work. And as you know. We have our accreditation taken away in the past, and it's been wonderful to have it back. And if we don't have a accreditation, we don't have anything. So I just want to say thank you to all the hard work that's being done in the education committee. And I want to give a special thank you to Dr. Berger, she's been giving very positive information at Senate and. It's just nice to know that our college is in really good hands for the accreditation, and it gives me peace of mind. Because before I came here, a lot of our faculty, they had pink slips, they were able to use their jobs. So even though I came here after that, it's just a big thing, so I just believe in giving credit where credit is due and. I'm just really proud of all the faculty for all the hard work that's been done and all the contribution. I also want to let you know, we're having our third academic senate meeting this Thursday. And I have requested the A S triple C just come and provide some helpful information to all the senators. So hopefully they get back to me soon, we'll be able to present some of the information. I was able to provide responses to the district regarding the decisions ever made at our academic senate meeting on March sixth. We have our simple syllabus pilot training cohort on March seventh. So what happens is, is we're. We're designing and implementing a simple syllabus platform that will allow, you know, our, our. Populate some of the information for our faculty, so it's gonna be a little bit easier. For them to create the syllabus, and it's gonna have the option to have it more consistent with this event. So we're looking forward to that, and having been in another college now, I can see how important it is to have that implementation be so accurate. In those processes, so it's just another area where I know we're going in the right direction. We're gonna be revising our academic senate bylaws. And I'm hoping that we're gonna be able to use the collaborative governance document that was provided to all of us. As a guide to help improve how our senate functions. We're gonna have AR forty, forty twenty-five philosophy and criteria for associate degree. And general education is going to be presented for a second read at the academic senate this Thursday. Also, we've had two committees merge into the adult education and workforce with a little bit more effort team. And we've already had four faculty members volunteer to be on it. So the workers are already full, just after a week of trying to get it filled. And which means that we have all of our campus and institutional committees are completely full. We don't have any vacancies, so I just think it really reflects, you know, how the college is, you know, it's running healthy. Faculty are involved and it's going really well, so it's just nice to see all of the participate, participation in the institutional committees and campus teams. I'm gonna be having a conversation with the senators this Thursday. I'm very interested, interested to know how they view the collaborative governance work group just moving forward. And we need to establish what the team membership is gonna be. And we need to establish what the team membership is going to be, so I'm looking forward to hearing what their thoughts are, so I can, uh, get back to the, to our tour meetings and share that, so. That's really all it. And I appreciate all of your time. It looks like it stopped raining. I forgot my umbrella, but I remembered my hairspray, so.
Primatology.
Anyways, you have a good evening. Thank you for your time.
Ten point zero three, season three, and mean certificate of employees support.
Uh, first one of you, good evening. Uh, last I saw you all, we're way on the district, five to our dates, I'm having to inform you that uh, all of our sessions planned, we actually completed our first bargaining session, where we accepted the district proposal for seventy seven compensation bond, uh, some minor changes. Uh, I would like to underline how difficult it was for the federation to accept this article, where they'd used a barbed low cola and inflation. Uh, and in the context of the current economy, I think so, noted highlight. Uh, we did so as a sign that we're serious to get the C V eight closed by. Uh, we look forward to a good faith response from the district with the remaining articles, so that the C V eight can finalize when we move on and start the next one right away, because we are. And that's all I got for you all tonight. I gotta run back to practice. Uh, but taking a pitch out of Dr. Curry's playbook, I would like to brag a little bit about my girls. Uh, this past weekend, we were down four zero in the first quarter. The game ended seven six, who won? Oh, we're gonna talk there and yell a little bit more, but.
It's not the championship.
Well, we'll do, thank you.
Moving on to the ten point zero four, seems to be the fee at the classified employees report. Mr. Minchell, so we can see him here, so moving on to item eleven, presentations, Dr. Curry.
Thank you very much. So tonight we have a couple of presentations, um, we have the financial audit for the district, uh, it's been the first one. So item number, number nine point zero one is our company financial, uh, audit report. That'll be provided by our auditor board, C W D L, who is here tonight to provide the presentation. I'd like to, Dr. Nassar. And Curry, for members, as I've already mentioned, we have Bishop Carter, we have Mr. Vaughn, Audit Partner, and we have representative from C W D L, Stephen Curry, partner. Stephen.
Thank you, everybody. Good afternoon. My name's David Curry. I'm a audit partner with C W D L. Uh, maybe just before we jump into this slide, just, uh, thank Dr. Nassar and the team, and really all the departments of the district, um. And it's not just one department, it's every single department across the district that comes together. We're very demanding as auditors, we ask for a lot of documents, um. All the way to financial aid office, through admissions and records, D S P S offices, so we want to thank all the departments on campus for everything. Uh, with that, kind of jump into kind of the agenda, so we're gonna go over the services and deliverables. The components of the audited financial statements, summary of our auditor results, some of the highlights, and then we'll go after into some of the, the bond items after this. So on the next one, the service deliverables, what we're doing is we're, we're rendering, um, three opinions, or we're rendering the opinion on the financial statements as a whole, we're rendering the opinion on the federal and state compliance, and we're also assessing the district's internal controls to help us render that financial. So just kind of how the breakout of the report is on the components, um, page one of the audit report is what we call the independent auditors, um, reports on the basic financial statements. So what we're saying is that we render that unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion that auditors can give to the district, um, essentially saying the financial statements are referred to, presented materially in all respects of the Compton Community College District as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. And then after that, we kind of get a breakout of kind of how the report's set up, so pages four through fifteen, what's called management discussion analysis. Analysis, uh, what this is, is very high level overview of fiscal year twenty four versus fiscal year twenty three. Um, gives you kind of an overview of the, the balance sheet, income statement, cash flows, and some of the economic factors. Then after that, you get into the basic financial statements, where we have the, uh, statement of deposition, statement of revenues, the cash flows, and some of the fiduciary activity related to the district's O P E D plan. Um, so this will be a little bit more detailed than what you'd seen in the M D N A, it gives you the breakout of what makes up all the assets, so you can see things from the, you know, A R, student receivables, A P, accrued liabilities, all the pension debt, O P E D debt, um, geo bond debt. After that, we get into kind of the, the, the rest of the financial, which is, uh, the big part, pages twenty two through fifty seven, the notes of the financial statements, um. What this is, is even more detailed. So if you went into the A R footnote, it tells you, it breaks out the sources, it gives you all the information on the geo bond debt. Information related to the district's pension liabilities, all the different actuarial information for both pensions and O P E D. Um, then after that, you get into the required supplementary information, um, this is very high level overview, kind of showing you for O P E D and pensions, kind of a historical ten year look back, um, seven years for O P E D, ten years in Apple pensions, eventually O P E D will be at ten years, so you can kind of see how those liabilities have changed over the ten, past ten years. And then after that, you have the supplementary information on the report, um, pages sixty five to seventy three. These are different areas for the, uh, the chancellor's office, as us as auditors, kind of to present to the audit report, just some stuff over the district order chart. schedule, expenditure, the federal, state awards, some information on the F T E S, and some reconciliations on how you get from the district's governmental fund into the audited financial statements. And then lastly, we would have the other independent hours report, which we'll go over in just a minute, is those last two reports, and then the one on the internal controls, and then the summary of our results. So on the next slide, we do have the summary of the auditor's results, so essentially what this is showing is we have an unmodified opinion for both the, uh, financials, federal and state awards, we did not have any findings or questioning costs that we believe needed to be into the report, um, any and all necessary adjustments, accruals, and conversion entries were booked into the district's fund, into the district's financial statements. So that's the review of the district's financials. Does anybody have any questions on just the district's ones? Christine.
Nice, nice for us. It's a lot of money, man, um, for our, but, um, no question.
Thank you.
Not offset, commit.
Yep.
Not offset, sorry.
All right, so the next one is our, um, report on measure C C and measure C. Um, so this is essentially, it's one report, but there's two aspects to it. You have the financial aspect, and then you have the performance aspect of it. So we're going to kind of just go over the deliverables and the components of those, those financial statements. Um, so what we're doing is we're rendering that, uh, opinion on the district's measure C C and bond financial statements, and on also the performance audits. One thing about these is when we're given that opinion, the opinion is just on that fund, so what we say is read that opinion and don't apply that fund to the rest of the districts. This is just a single fund, or a single funds of the district for just those bonds. So we did issue that unmodified opinion similar to the district, um, they kind of coincide with each other. You're, we're auditing the district's funds, it is one of the funds of the district, so when we have a really clean opinion on the districts, you can almost assume all, at all times, it's also going to be a clean opinion on the, the bond fund. Um, kind of the components of this, so starts out on page four to five, you have just the balance sheet and the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes, so the income statement side. Just kind of go over on the next two, so the balance sheet, you can kind of see at the end of the year where we're sitting at, so measure C C has eight point two, measure C has the thirty five million dollars. To those who are restricted for future capital projects. And then on the next page, you can kind of see what I would say is the income statement related to this, so you can see interest and investment income loss, um. For those, the expenditures for the current year, ultimately, the big one this year that we, we highlighted out is the issuance of the measure C. On there issued out, so I think there's about thirty, thirty five million dollars that were issued, and you have the, the issuance costs that go along with that, bringing that down to dollar on the issue C. So ending the year, that's how we kind of get to the eight point two and the thirty five point two million dollars. And then kind of the remaining information on that is just the notes of the financial statement, same thing, um, the accounting policies and information breakdown for the cash. And then we have the other independent auditors report, where we talk about the internal controls and how we assess those internal controls to render that financial thing that we talked about. And we did not have any findings or anything related to that for either the performance audit or the regular one, so. On this next slide, you can kind of see the summary, we have the unmodified opinions related to financial statements, no findings or questioning costs for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, and no performance exceptions. Essentially, what this means is that those expenditures that we're looking at, we're making sure that they're being spent according to the bond out language for those approved projects. And that kind of wraps with that. Any questions? Christine.
No, just thank you for the report. I, I, you know, because I just want to live with that. Very interesting reading. I had put my little numbers so that I could understand the numbers, especially when you was talking about, uh, putting the money, don't put it anyplace else, not put it in place, but don't put it on another item, because it's just for that item alone, when you was explaining that, because at first I didn't, I kept saying, no, this is wrong. Then I said, well, I'm not the auditor either, so, so yeah, they ought to know what they're talking about, so yeah, so I, I followed it, I thought it was very in depth, I think it's very good, and it just showed exactly where what we're doing with the money, the use of the money, how we're keeping up with the money, and how we're not spending it on, on illegal stuff, we're spending on it for what it's supposed to be used for.
Yes, right.
So I thank you for doing such a great job for Compton College. Appreciate it.
Thank you for that report.
Just to know that on the action, then, uh, it's, it's right now with the board accepts our reports. And we're moving forward with submitting, um, information to, um, Chancellor's Office, and also to the Department of Education, and also to the, uh, you need how the voting's in S and P. I was going to be revising our eleven report for tests on this, as it goes to our financials and all, so that it can be done. So thank you to Dr. Nassar and his team for working through this, but especially thanks to C W D L and their entire team for working with us for the college.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, the next item, oh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to forget what was going on here. Oh, the next item is, uh, we have the update on the foundation for Compton Free College Division. The presentation is provided by, uh, Heather Carter, who has earned to be community relations and West, oversight of the foundation, and part of the responsibility.
Good evening, board of trustees, and I'm. Uh, my name is Heather Brad, I am the director of community relations for Compton College, and also the director for the foundation for the Compton College Division, as well as the secretary right now. Um, so I am here today to give you a quick update about our, um, how the foundation is doing, including our regular meeting schedule, our current board membership. Um, we do have a couple vacancies, we have set goals for this year, and we're tracking those. And I have an update from our board of directors, and then I have a couple of special questions to get your guys' feedback and input on the foundation. Uh, so the foundation was reestablished in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. We are a five oh one C three for in California. It's just basics of what we are. Right, so we do meet the fourth Thursday of every other month, in person, five thirty P M, the meetings are open to the public. Our next meeting is coming up on March twenty seventh. Uh, the executive committee, which is our, um, board of directors, that also serves as our board development committee, so we review applications um, and make recommendations for new planning dates for the board. Uh, we meet every other month in between. Sorry, you're doing great. Board of directors, uh, so this is a list of our current members. Uh, we currently have seven voting members, we should have nine, so we had a couple of, of members, um, leave us in the past year, um. So we're looking for new. Our focus right now is community members, rather than, uh, we are a little bit on the Compton College District side a little too heavy, so we're trying to get some community members. Uh, good news is, we have some applications that are going to be reviewed at the March twenty seventh meeting. So we're hoping to accept those recommendations and have a couple of new, uh, board members. Um, our annual organization meeting takes place in June of every year, we did elect new officers, they serve two year terms. Uh, Mr. Daniel Chanel has, uh, agreed to be our president for another two years. Eddie McGee is our vice president. Sherry Burger has stepped in as our treasurer, and I remain of our secretary. As I mentioned, we do have two vacancies, um, specifically nonprofit representative and a faculty member, but as I said, we're trying to focus on community membership. Um, so, and that is our current applications right now. Uh, there is a interest form available on the foundation webpage, so if anybody would like to fill it out, it's Microsoft Office Form. The executive committee reviews it every other month, and we make a recommendation to the board of directors. And our goals that we set in June, the first one is to hire a foundation manager. Uh, we did not make this deadline, uh, we did have to go back out, um, so we are actually in the process, uh, of rounds. Um, final interviews are scheduled for this week, uh, so fingers crossed, we get ourselves a brand of foundation manager. Uh, we also wanted to develop a five year strategic plan, uh, by January twenty third, we are slightly behind on that, because we are waiting on final audit reports. And those are in progress, so Dr. Nassar is working with, um, an auditor to do that, and also clean up our financial records. So we have a clear picture of everything, um, so we're working on that, most of that is in progress right now. Next slide. Uh, as I mentioned, we're trying to fill all of the vacant positions. Uh, we want to organize or support two campus events before June thirtieth. Uh, so we do co-host the annual academic awards and scholarship celebration. That's where our presidential scholars and our scholarship recipients get their certificates, uh, so we do host that. And we have also been hosting a table at our commencement celebration at Dignity Health. Uh, so we plan on doing that again, uh, recruit for, um, participation in the foundation, and also give an update on what we do in terms of scholarships. Um, increasing the engagement and encourage state colleges, we're going to get to that, because that is my discussion questions for this evening. So this is our project chart, we look at this at each of our meetings, um, so we keep track of our progress on all of our goals. So we're in the process of hiring a foundation manager, we did set our meeting schedule, we finalized our goals. We did sign a contract for the new online donor management system, we chose Bloomerang, uh, we have not launched it to go live yet. Um, because we were kind of hoping to have the foundation manager right now, so they can set up the first campaign and do a huge launch. Um, but we, we do have a contract, we just haven't gone live yet. Uh, the annual report is on hold, because we are waiting for our final twenty three, twenty four audit. Um, we are looking at our bylaws, uh, they were last reviewed in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, we need to make some updates. Uh, whether it be terminology, specifying some certain procedures and such, so we are in the process of doing that. We talked about the two events, and we will have our annual formation board of directors meeting in June. Um, I talked about Bloomerang, it, it is very cool, it's kind of like our CRM, um, advice, where we can set up some games and email students. It's also where we will be able to accept online donations, so right now we accept checks, cash, and credit card, but it all is processed through the person's office. Um, and deposited into the foundation account. Bloomerang would allow us to, um, accept donations online, less so like you do for any other charitable organization. Um, so we're, that's for that to go live. Um, we met, I mentioned the annual report, uh, we are required to, um, publish this once a year. Uh, so we've been a little remiss, um, but that is because we are catching up on all of our audits, so we are now finishing our third audit in one year, because we're catching up on back to work. Uh, partnering with human resources, we're going to revamp our payroll deduction program to boost employee participation. Uh, this is on our open enrollment form, right here, but it was at the very bottom, and so we're going to do a little publicity, get more employees uh, to make monthly donations in support of the foundation, our scholarship program. Uh, we did set a date for the academic scholarship awards ceremony, it's Monday, June third, at six P M in the gym, I hope you guys spend all time. Uh, and as I mentioned, our final interviews, the foundation, um, manager are scheduled for this Wednesday, um, but it'll remain open in October, so pretty much props for us. All right, this is where I would like to discuss with the board, the governing board. Um, how the foundation, how we can better support the district's mission and vision. Um, and we will also take you back on. Um, on, we will also take you back on what you think is the biggest challenges that we currently face, especially for nonprofit organizations. And what opportunities do you see for increasing community engagement and support for the foundation? Or you may ask questions. A lot to think about. We're just looking for outside, outside of the box ideas. And um if you get asked questions about the foundation, um you can make online donations. There is a form that you fill out and you can either mail in or stop by the person's office to make a donation. Um, or you can set up a scholarship. It's a, it's a form at this moment, um but if you set up the criteria, the eligibility, um you can do that as well. If you know anybody who's looking to make a charitable donation, create a tax write-off and let it support a Compton College student.
Christine.
All right. Okay, so um what about uh V M O Cash App? Zelle? Uh, what's the one y'all have with that iPhone? That, there you go, Apple Pay.
So in lieu of that, that is what our online donation platform will give. So Bloomerang actually takes your payment. So you can pay with a um account. If you wanted to use your checking account to make a donation, or if you wanted to put in a credit card number, you'll be able to do it online.
Okay.
But that hasn't been implemented yet.
No, it has not. We signed a contract just in December, but it has not gone live yet. Uh, fingers crossed we hire a foundation manager and that is the first thing on their to-do list, actually.
About doing all those things, I just think.
To set up this online system, yes.
Uh, what do you believe are the biggest challenges currently faced by nonprofit and how can I find the, 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 the challenges in particular? Uh, I think the biggest challenge of facing any nonprofit is money. So I got somebody for you. B M O. B M O is the bank that is in Compton, that is on Long Beach Boulevard. I'm sorry, I don't have their cards on me. But B M O, uh, they do a lot of things in this community that people don't even know about because people don't even contact them. They also give money to nonprofits and foundations. So when I get to where I'm going tomorrow, I'm going to email you those names. And uh, I went to a meeting and they talked about what they did and I'm just looking like, huh? Didn't know they did all the stuff that they've been doing. And you could probably use them for yes, one of your events too. So I'll email you that and you can share it with the young lady. Well, okay, you can share with her. So that's the biggest. But uh, what opportunities do you see for increasing community engagement and support for the foundation? By really letting the community know. Everybody's, okay, so like you might do a flyer and you might send it to the school board. You might send it to the City of Compton, the mayor, and ask them to read it at their meeting. There's uh, there's something else. I can't think of it, but uh, that would help. And then, so that's the city, that's the school district. And uh, I can't think of anybody else, but you know, they could read it at their board meeting also about um community engagement and about our foundation. Then you could, uh, I'm sorry, y'all. You could get with the Compton Chamber, uh, Dr. Lesteens Johnson. You could get with uh the uh Compton Entertainment uh Chamber, which is Alonso. Uh, you can, Michael on his radio show, if, if y'all talk it out to talk about the foundation and everything that the foundation does and looking for community engagement. But you, you'd be in your office and he'll be there and he'll interview you like that. So that's Alonso Williams. Put it in the newspaper. Put it in the, in the Wave and the Compton Bulletin, because you can put, and the Center, those three newspapers, y'all use those too. Okay, put it in those three newspapers. Um, Sentinel is worldwide. The Wave is dropped off at Compton. The Bulletin is at Compton. It's a different location, but they mostly get it from City Hall. But the Sentinel, you could go online and get it and, or you do, whatever. So those are three newspapers. Thank you, Mitch. That is, that is fantastic. That's it.
I have said, I, I have questions. Um they're on the board long, but, but I'm new to this. On the foundation, like, what, what, what's, like, the, the funding that the foundation generates, that's only for students, scholarships, right? Or what else?
And operational costs. We sponsor some activities or events um and kind of collect funds specifically for events that goes right out. Um, so one of the changes we wanted to make in our bylaws is to make sure that we're getting some sort of uh for the collection of it because we're also the ones filling it out. The others just come in and we go straight out. It, it, the primary focus is the scholarship program. Um, we have received funding from the uh Ford approved and telecom settlement. Uh, we do receive some funds um from the original bookstore contract. Um, so from sales revenue. And um, we do have a small part at the moment, maybe Oliver, then we acquire a seat. Um, and the trust fund that goes towards the Compton College Promise Program. So we issue waivers that kind of means on our promise for that. Not the California Promise Back, but that Compton College, Oliver, our promise for that.
Me, and, and, and my opinion, the, the, the biggest hurdle is the, the, the online thing that was mentioned. Because for, for me, that's like easy access to like do something. I don't have to go up to campus or like sharing that information with people I know that should donate.
Right. So we'll be able to set up campaigns as well. So we can't wait. Um, so we'll be able to set up campaigns. So like if we're trying to raise funds specifically for an event or a program or a scholarship, we can do that. It'll also help with our employee giving. Um, so there's the, the ongoing contribution through your payroll. That's through H R. Um, but also we did a employee giving campaign this last November. We raised fifteen hundred dollars um in a matter of two weeks, uh just by soliciting, does anybody need to make donations before the tax? And so we were able to make a few dollars that way, but it was via check because we weren't feeling that online system yet. So that would be great to have that platform.
I see though.
Uh, when you say the scholarship, how much do you get? It's for the students, right? So how much would you be giving the students out of the scholarship money? That's what I'm saying.
So just along with the telecom settlement, so we have a five-year, five-year plan where we expanded our scholarship program and have a eighty thousand dollars for our scholarship um applications. Um, last year I think we only ended up awarding twenty four or twenty-eight thousand. Um, it wasn't until eighty thousand, uh we didn't have that many applications. Um, so we have the funds. Um, and there are part-time scholarships, full-time scholarships. We opened it up so that they can take some of the scholarships with them when they transfer. Um, and the scholarships are, you know that you are an awardee at the celebration, which is in May or June, and then you get your first distribution in the fall semester. So based on um final enrollment information, whether you're a transfer student or you're here at Compton College, it refers to dispersment.
So is, is A S G aware of it? And is the student um trustees, are they, they aware of this scholarship? That, that's another.
I have to ask them. So they, they should have received. So the scholarship program, they email us and have it at the financial aid office. Um, I have seen posters on campus and they do work with the uh Reading Writing Center. So if, and students need help writing their um their essays that goes along with their um application. So they're
For the scholarships?
Yes.
Yeah, we get those in, we get, it's in our own canvas.
Okay.
Here is why a lot of students don't block. Is there a, do you have that question? Say it again.
Are sometimes.
Cause there's a one.
Essay.
Uh, essay. Oh, that, that, your essay. Is, is it a essay hall?
They get to choose the topic. They get to write, if they could say why they, they need the scholarship. They can tell about how they chose Compton College. What their future education is going to be. It's an open-ended.
And that's all in the paperwork that they could use whatever they want to use.
And so if they use, utilize our reading writing center, they actually have workshops specific to that essay. So you can go in there and you can brainstorm ideas. They help you write it. They help you interpret it.
And is that on the application too that you go to wherever you just said you go to?
No, it's not on there, but they do have separate flyers for that.
That matches it.
Yeah, and the O K and S have been reaching out a lot. So, yeah.
Is this a scholarship that the student's going to apply for on the website or gives you the?
Yes. So I believe the application is available here in Mike Compton.
Yeah.
Um, and it's also on the financial aid. I think you click on scholarships.
Yeah.
And there's the button to apply right there.
And some of the students don't apply either to some of the scholarships. The one of, like, one time I applied. And if you don't come, if you're not going to be a student the next following semester, a lot of the scholarship students can't receive and it's a rule that we guys got excluded. The school have, but I received a scholarship and I didn't get it because the following semester I wasn't going to be enrolled.
Yeah, I've addressed that to the board a few times about that, I believe.
So based on enrollment, so you, so you have, there's part-time scholarship, there's a full-time scholarship. So if you're not enrolled, you don't get the scholarship to you, uh registered or processed. So yes, it is.
If you're continuing student or to receive your scholarship, no matter what school you go to, if you receive from Compton College or we look at Cal State Long Beach, you have to show proof that you are enrolled and you are continuing on in your education to be able to receive that.
Oh, you can't take the money in room.
That, that's something determined by the foundation or the.
Actually, that is new thought. Um, the scholarship program is managed under the financial aid office. Um, it is on our to-do list though. It's to the foundation to have a staff committee and we can look at that. So the scholarship application closes March thirty first. So there's not much we can change right now because it opens December first. Um, so our plan is to look at it after the awards, like, did we see an increase in applications? Was there a decrease? Whether the demographics of the applicants look like? And then um maybe make changes to the next enrollment for the next academic year.
And so you, you mentioned that uh la- last time around twenty-four students were awarded scholarships. Do we have a hard app on the number of students that have attended, really? Get a scholarship, receive a scholarship.
Don't have it with me. I can provide that. We have a long list. So there's usually four to five for each program. So it's like business division, there's four scholarships and two of them are part-time, two of them are full-time. And it goes through all of our guided pathways. Um, a lot of our category funding programs, the O P S has a specific one. Calbridge has one, S R C students. We have a formerly incarcerated scholarship. There's a variety that you can be eligible for.
Are there, are there?
Well, I don't have it out. I, I didn't know that um I'm glad you let me know that during the foundation and the thing, if they're not a continuing student, they don't, they don't deal.
So I need to clarify. So I, so um Ms. Thomas asked that question a couple months ago and I tried to get the answer. So the way I understood it, so if Serenity was awarded the scholarship in, let's say, May. So maybe you did not attend in fall.
Yeah.
I understood that you could still get half your scholarship if you came back in the spring. Because a continuing student is two primary semesters. So you'd have to miss a full year before you were not a continuing student.
Okay.
But we need to clarify about that. Um, so they do check your enrollment at census. So it's the same thing with your financial aid dispersment. So your max is after census.
And then you, you, you have board members uh donate to, for the scholarship?
Absolutely, absolutely. You can make a general donation just to the foundation and let us use it as we, we need it. Um, or you can set up a scholarship and both forms are available online.
We can set up a scholarship?
Yes.
So you can survive then?
If, if you would like putting learning memory to someone, ongoing, one time. Oh, yes, many opportunities.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank, thank you.
Thank you. That's a very ovation.
Thank you, my co-host.
Moving on to item twelve, consent agenda. Is there a motion to?
Okay.
Are there any items we have uh that the board wants to have addressed?
Um.
Um. You know what? No, I, I, I did all my questions. I did say uh I would like to make a comment, but I changed my mind. So, no, I don't want to tell anything.
Trustee.
Not if we're telling you.
Not right now. No, that's an on point vote.
Without any further discussion, can we please have the online vote for the consent agenda? Moving on to item thirteen, action items, thirteen point zero one, the twenty twenty-five California Community College Trustee's Board Elections. There, there, there's a there was a, there's a recommended list uh for four positions. This we have assigned to Sonia Lopez. Do we move it and then open it up?
Uh, that I've done in the past. Uh, it's, so you can give the votes at the beginning of discussion. If there's a change to motion, you can add the one.
Is the move by trustee Lopez? Now, um.
You said. Oh, okay, I wasn't sure.
Is there any discussion, proceeds or trustee Lopez?
I want to see there was, there's four openings. Three may have been in comments, but I'm not too sure. Um, and so I went over the application process for everyone that submitted. And these were the four candidates that um stood out based on their responses.
Uh, sixteen, right? Uh, it'll be actual sixteen, sixteen.
There, and each one was. So these, these are the recommended um ones I'm looking for.
Adams, wait a minute. No. I'm sorry.
Trustee Kevin?
Yeah, I don't uh I agree with uh two. And I agree with four. I do not agree with one. And I do not agree with three.
For at at least.
Um, yeah. Um. Number five, Hosea Calla from Riverside. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, hold on. Yeah, I take this back, I take this back, I'm sorry. I do agree with number two, I do agree with number four. And I do agree with number three. So. If number one, I don't agree with. So, yeah, cause I I did pick four, but uh Rebecca Barnett from. Contract. Uh huh.
Barrett.
Barrett, thank you so much. Looking my glasses, I don't like to see them. I do not, could you? If you could tell me why you picked her? What was? Your reason, I I, I mean, because I know that um Aneahs Luna. Is the incumbent, I'm curious why you didn't choose the other incumbent.
Uh is that the name you referenced?
Yeah, Hosea Akala.
His application was not, for someone who was an incumbent, didn't really tell me much. Maybe I didn't read, maybe I. Then he should be on page twenty. He didn't come in and I I would have expected um application to stand out a little bit more.
Well, I can't find it.
Um so it didn't.
You do you have this, because the way I printed it out.
It it's on the attached, oh, it's on that one too.
Oh.
It's page eight of seventeen on board.
Oh. Wait, that page what?
Oh, yeah, but yeah, but it shows the number at the bottom.
Yeah, that's what's throwing me off, okay.
Oh, for mine it's thirty four.
See.
Mine's two. Uh thirty four slash sixty one.
Oh, it's all of this though, actually. It's go eight seventeen and then it goes to, then it goes thirty four.
I I I can't find it. Cause these are all thirty two. Okay, just let me go to we and find it.
Uh so if you put on the little box on the top, page twenty one.
Okay, I'll I'll move you. Right here.
I don't know where right here.
Oh, okay. Y'all don't be in computers.
Oh, okay, no.
No, y'all don't have anyone.
No, you do. Oh, right here, this one right here, but twenty one.
But when the words say number one?
Yeah, move that to twenty one and then it should um. Take you to um. And you want to enter, so you're, uh who's right? There you go.
Okay. Said he thought his application, what point?
I I think he's an incumbent, it just did nothing. That up based on what he's done in the first. Well, like he didn't share more, he just gave very basics. The very, you see some of like the other responses, they're a little bit more executive, I didn't even know he was in, I don't think I'd ever seen him. So I just, I I rely on on the.
I'm missing it.
Okay, well, then I expected his application to stand out. But I mean, if you, if you can elaborate like on where you feel, then by all means, open to hearing that.
And on your recommendation, same.
No, you you better make me lay up now.
We can, it's up to our discussion, that's what, that's what she's recommending, if you're recommending an alternate, um we can do that, we've done it in the past, just a recommendation.
May I also, I would like to recommend number eight, uh Shane Lu, if I, if I was gonna correct you. Over double two. That's my recommendation.
When is this due? Are you, because we're having a, the reason I say we're having a. The Black Caucus and the Joint Caucus, we're having interviews. On the twenty third and they're on Zoom, but every single candidate. But on uh March the twenty third, which is Sunday. And every single candidate is gonna receive the Zoom information and they get to come on and talk.
This needs to be submitted no later than April twenty five, okay, it's April twenty fifth.
When is our next board meeting?
April twenty first.
Okay, our board meeting is April twenty first. And they were late putting this out, that's why the the uh Black Caucus, the Joint Caucus is having a. Uh the meeting as soon as we could, which is uh this Sunday to twenty third. And we're sending a Zoom invite to all trustees. And to all the caucuses that they wanna come on. To uh hear what they have to say, we're gonna give them five minutes. They get a two minute intro. Uh one minute, we have one question for them to ask, answer. And then they get a two minute closing, so I think it's gonna be, we give each person five minutes. And for the ones that cannot come, they're gonna send a video. They can send a video and we'll show the video.
Are you proposing, postponing this, is that what they're hearing?
Yes.
And then I'm gonna look at Shane that you're talking about. And uh.
Shane. Shane Lu, right?
Shane Lu from Street.
Yes, definitely, number eight.
I could, I can go to and look at it some more, but then they will be. And who does not show up, that's on them, but everybody will have a chance to send in a video. Or show up on the Zoom. And so I would like to know if we could postpone this until the next board meeting. And she say we do meet before. Is due. And even the league had to send a notice that they were late. They were late. In in uh setting all of this up. And so that's why it's a rush for us to uh. We did it over a year ago, do you remember uh Andres, if you could come on? That's where we met uh Jonathan and the rest of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, we're doing it again.
But they send the information out to the board members, how was that, was that happening for the, I don't know, for this event?
Oh, we're getting ready to, we're getting ready to do it now, uh Rena. Is also gonna assist us in sending the emails to all board members of all the colleges. Everybody, they, she finally sent us the uh, what do you call that list, it's called serve list. I'm learning these things. Oh, thank you, I sent it back. I'm still learning, listserv, okay, I said serve list, huh? Okay, yes, uh. We got it and uh we just got it, and so now we're gonna send it out. And everybody has my phone number, hopefully, and if you don't get it. Uh. By Tuesday or Wednesday, please let me know.
Are we um?
I I think I saw the triple C T, you know, of of the virtual.
You did, yeah, triple C T added too, yeah.
Trustee Lopez?
Um this is for Dr. Curry, if we were to. Um bring my motion for this one, I would have, we would have to put in a motion. Are we good on our end to be able to commit by that point?
Yeah, the the um this. Process wise, if the board were to decide to move this to another date. Then trustee Lopez would have to send her motion and then also sue trustee Tommy to send her second. And then have their second motion to. To move this item to be April twenty first meeting. Uh so board members could be a bad opportunity to review the webinar, uh to be able to discuss candidates that were recommended. And so I think the item, we will follow back up, if that were happened, we'll follow back up with trustee Lopez. For the board item again, based on what the board has done in the past, and then the board can. They kept this list again only April twenty first, and it could change a lot depends on what trustee Lopez provides and ran it.
Got it, so just to make sure the most um recent. The directive would be to rescind and the motion would be to postpone this vote until April twenty first.
Correct.
Do I have to give all the extra?
Uh but I think, I think it's, if, I think it should be postponed, but then also too that you would still come back with the recommendation for the next week. Because that was part of the duties that you were assigned as as an organization.
Got it. So I'm gonna resend my motion for thirteen point zero one and I'm going to propose a new motion to um. Move this item to be in the April twenty first agenda. Um in order for us to elect the twenty twenty five California Community College District Board election. By so.
It's just process wise, you want to remove the the second or the first motion? You have to use, you said to your second of the first motion.
I wanna remove my um second motion on the first time and then just process it right now for the same.
Is there any discussions? And we have the online vote for that second motion.
Well, you gotta have to, you wanna have to state that.
That's part of the duties, so you have to say.
So she wanted to know if she should add, then you just wanna be a.
Okay. Yes.
Moving on to item thirteen point zero two, content is using the B resolution number zero two dash twenty four dash twenty twenty five. Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Compton Community College District authorizing the development of procedures to support. Compton. Not to support community college students who leave the country due to deportation related circumstances, is there a motion?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Lopez, seconded by um trustee Calvin, is there any discussion? No discussion. Can we please have the online vote?
Yes, vote.
Thirteen point zero three, Compton C C D Resolution number zero three dash thirteen dash twenty twenty five. The Resolution of a Board of Trustees of the Community College District approving the consolidation of trust funds into three. New trust and designating them for specific activities, is there a motion?
So.
It's been moved by trustee Calvin, seconded by trustee Lopez, is there any?
That's the unanimous yes vote.
Thirteen point zero four, Compton C C D, other post appointment benefits. Futurist Public Entity Investment Trust Funding Withdrawal Schedule.
So.
It's been moved by trustee Calvin, seconded by trustee Lopez, is there any discussion? Without any further discussion, can we please have the online vote?
Thank you, unanimous yes vote.
Thirteen point zero five, Compton C C D, first third. California Public Entity Foundation, they would issue funds funding. Is there a second? By trustee Calvin, seconded by trustee Lopez, is there any discussion? Can we please have the online vote?
That's the unanimous yes vote.
Thirteen point zero six, Administrative Services twenty twenty three through twenty twenty four. Compton C C D Financial Audit Report.
So.
It's been moved by trustee Calvin, seconded by trustee Lopez, is there any discussion? Can we please have the online vote?
That's the unanimous yes vote.
Thirteen point zero seven, Administrative Services twenty twenty three through twenty twenty four, General Application Bond Audit and Performance Audit. Is there a second? It's been moved by trustee Calvin, seconded by trustee Lopez, is there any discussion? Without any further discussion, can we have that?
Yeah.
Thirteen point zero eight, Administrative Services, Compton C C D Resolution number zero three dash seventeen dash twenty twenty five. See budget transfers and authentication for this four years. It's been moved by trustee Calvin, seconded by trustee Lopez, is there any discussion? With no discussion, can we please have the online vote? Moving on to item fourteen, discussion and action, Dr. Curry.
Today uh for meeting for discussion and action, we have one item, which is interesting, is our public college full time equivalent student update, I'd like to have Dr. Burgess speak to that, please.
Thank you, Dr. Curry. In our full time equivalent students, um we are currently doing better in terms of our F T S head count and enrollment information. Compared to prior springs, Heather, can you please open the um first attachment? Thank you. Um so you can see that we are at one thousand five hundred eighty six F T S as of last week, although we're back to where we were today as well. Um our enrollment is over eleven thousand seats filled and our head count is at five thousand, scroll down. Five thousand four hundred twenty two um students. So we're doing well compared to last year, up about fourteen to fifteen percent. And if you scroll down to uh the third page. You can see a comparison of um our. Um enrollment, which is our seats filled, and you can see that where the bar is uh for spring twenty five at eleven thousand two hundred thirty three. That is above the four other lines, that is spring twenty four, twenty three, twenty two, and twenty one. We're still below spring twenty twenty, um and that was to be expected, that we hope that we'll be able to reach that next year. We are still below spring twenty twenty, um, and that was to be expected, that we hope that we'll be able to reach that next year. As we continue to grow enrollment, um, in the next slide, um, we have our F T S trend. We have our F T S trend, and again, similar patterns compared to our enrollment. When we get to headcount, you will actually see in the next slide that we are above where we were in actually all prior spring terms. Including spring twenty twenty, which was our spring right when the pandemic, so that enrollment was based on pre-pandemic. So our headcount is doing well, um, we just need to see the other trends increase along with the headcount. But more bodies means more F T S and more enrollment ultimately, so we're on track. Um, our goal for this year is four thousand one hundred twenty-five F T S. And we still have enrollments and positive attendance coming in, um, we should be looking good to be close to reaching that goal.
Are there any questions?
So my question is, um, when you guys do these graphs and these charts and you said um N C, right? Um, you know, things change after two weeks, so when are you guys doing these charts, like the first week of school or after a month? To see if there's N C and see if that's accurate?
Um, so these, these numbers are based on relative dates to the prior years. So right now, we're um, I'm on this with them, we're ten days after our primary term census day. But we're continuing to enroll students for our second eight-week classes for, um, and actually when we're doing this on Thursday, we're still enrolling for any twelve-week classes. So we will see fluctuations in numbers as the different term census hits. Um, we'll see increases as we approach the term, we might see some slight increases um at census, no shows are included. But they're all comparisons to the same point in time in those previous spring semesters, so in this case, it's. Ten days after the main census is what we're comparing it to.
I just wanted to make sure you know that ten days, things change, maybe a student might drop out of that class and get into another class, or you just drop out of Compton period and say this is not working for me. So I just wanted to know how accurate, um, you know, is your chart, but.
So these are based on enrollment, so if a student withdraws, say, in week six, and they get a W. We're still gonna see that here as an enrollment, because our enrollment is based on census and that census day and what we report to the state for our portion.
In the body of the um item, I see notification regarding the visits to the welcome center. And this is access to my portal, my Compton portal, is it trouble shooting, because I've seen trouble shooting specifically on it. What kind of issues are students having with their Compton portal?
I'm gonna defer that to V P G M since it's from that area.
So we have a lot of um students that come and they're all considered and assist friends with registration and forced registration. So oftentimes, that usually what they come in and ask for support for, which is through the portal.
So it wouldn't be the, they wouldn't be categorized under add, drop, or waitlist course?
They could be.
Or be admissions.
They could, they could be categorized in multiple points, because essentially we use creating cafe. The document services provided to each student, if they receive more than one service at a time.
So, um, if they receive more than one service, do they just check off the primary reason on it and then it could be multiple?
Right, they will check all the services, ideally that the ser- that the student received for that particular engagement. And um in addition to registration, sometimes you will go through the portal to get access to other services. So finding that for counseling services is also on the portal, you go chat with a tab or title. So it could be any one of the services that they may connect up on through the Compton portal that they might need help.
Do we see this, I, I know based on January's numbers, this one's a little bit more increased, do we see it? This being as we get closer to a different deadline, that would get an increase for uptake of offers? For the uh visit to the local tonight?
So the, the data that we get, we pull on a monthly basis, and so on the last day of the month. Um, based on everything that happened from the first day to the last day of the month, that's where we pulled it, and so we would like to see. Daily numbers, we could pull that and break it down daily.
No, not that, it was more on um, is there kind of, I, I see they're monthly, so in January, it goes a little bit. It was lower maybe by a hundred or a little less, give or take, just trying to see if there was something that was matching based on, on the calendar, because. If winter session was coming in.
Yeah, so, so we had peak registration during the month of February, um, which is a week before classes start. And we have extended hours during peak registration, we were open Monday through Thursday to six thirty and Fridays till four thirty, and then we had one day of Saturday. One of the hours you can use for peak registration, um, I think it's Thursday until six thirty. And then Friday till four thirty, and we have one Saturday that we're open on.
Do you find that that's helping?
Yes.
It does help our students to have more um of our offices open during that busy time, yeah. So all of our student services are open to the best of our ability during those days until six thirty P M, Monday to Thursday.
And tell me about Friday then?
Friday till four thirty.
But Monday to Thursday is until?
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
During peak registration.
And uh Friday is until quarter. Why, I'm just asking why, why, why can't Friday be till six, I'm just asking, why can't Friday be till six thirty also?
We typically see less traffic on Friday, the campus isn't as populated on Fridays. If there's a demand, I can definitely discuss extending hours on Fridays, we try to accommodate as much as we can during peak registration. And we also extend on, on Saturdays to half.
You think they don't come on Fridays, but they know you guys are closed at quarter? Or did you, I'm just asking a question, or is it, cause I'm not here, cause I'm online?
Right, well. Monday, Monday through Thursday, during the course of the regular term, we only have one evening that we're open until six thirty. Outside of peak registration, because we've seen that the numbers of students trail off in the lower, in the, in the evening hours. And on Fridays, we're open until one.
Once again, do they trail off? Do they trail off due to the fact that they know what the hours are? That's what I'm asking, that's what I just asked, if they know that you're closing at the time, you're closing or whatever you do. Could that be the reason why? I'm just asking, I know you said Monday to Thursday is heavy, but I'm talking about Friday, because they know. What time you close, so their thing is, no matter what they're doing, they can't get here that Friday. So that's why they don't come, because they know that you're closing early, that's my question.
That, I don't know, I don't know if that's actually the reason why they don't come after four thirty.
From a student's perspective, I would say yes, yes, say no, if you already are aware of their timeframe in the peak hours, and it's not just in the welcome center. It's also in the E O P and S, they have the peak registration as well, they're open to six thirty, financial aid also open to six thirty, don't know why, they're not doing anything, but anyhow. Um, okay, yes, uh, but they do that all around, and I do find it helping a lot of students to utilize it if they are aware of it. Yes, they're open on Friday, so six thirty, a lot of students probably will be flooding in, but the campus is dry instead, that no one is here on Fridays. But because they are aware of the timeframe already, you already been here two years, you already know what it's like Monday to Thursday, so you wanna utilize Monday to Thursday. To try and get everything done for Friday coming and it's, you know, everything is complete. But they would be. They would be. They would be here all. The time they spend, yes, but. No, I, I get what you're saying, but you know, being a student, I'm already aware of what the timeframe is for the registration beat, so I try and utilize those time. Monday and Thursday to try and, you know, get whatever work I need done come Friday, I don't need, I'm not, I don't need to be here till six thirty. So I get what you're saying, and I'm trying to help you out too, so yeah.
So is, so is the, is the question asking for us to reexamine hours operation?
I sure am. I was, that was gonna be my next one. Maybe, what, maybe, well, maybe, I, I, I don't know, I don't come in person, I'm just talking about if, if everybody already know. Why would I come on Friday, I'm gonna do my best to be here Monday through Thursday. Because I know on Friday, y'all can't help me at all, nobody can help you, E O P and S, none of y'all can help me, because I know you're closed. And, and so you do it on a Saturday, and that, no, no disrespect, you said you do it on one time on a Saturday?
Yeah, so typically we have multiple Saturdays, but this year we only have one Saturday.
So, so see, I know, I know you got it on a Saturday, but Saturday, I probably can't find no babysitter. And then, I don't know, just saying, I, I can't find no babysitter, I bring a child with me, child might be crying, fussing. I'm just thinking outside of the box. If, if I know that I can come on a Friday and it's open until six or six thirty. I wouldn't have to come on a Saturday, y'all wouldn't have to come on a Saturday out of y'all house either. Cause you know, you're doing it on a Friday.
We do have Saturday courses, so for those students that are taking courses on Saturdays, this will be like a Saturday, where we have office hours open.
I, I said, I understand, I'm still talking about a Friday. But if you need more help, the, uh, the library is open, and they're open until six o'clock, and people aren't a- and there to help you in any way, in any way. Do a lot of the students know that? I don't know, I'm just trying to sell you, yes, people are aware, students are aware that, that the library is open until six. Okay, it's just that they don't, okay.
My library is also open every Saturday.
Yeah.
So, so. To b- to bow that up to the board.
No, you know. I'm just saying, no, 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 let, let me back up, cause obviously the stu- the students know it. And they know that they can come on a Saturday, and they know the hours on, on a Friday. Um, no, I'm not asking you to ask your staff to stay here long until six thirty. You can't, I don't want, I don't want your staff to do nothing that they don't want to do, to help the students out.
But I, I have a concern, right, and I, my concern right now with our enrollment and hours of operation, I'm gonna be looking at all hours of operation. This great semester to make changes for all, at the end of the day, enrollment is there for the students' services. And we really need to look at our hours of operation, including Fridays and also Saturdays, now we run five little services for our students, and that's something that we have to look at. Everything's on the table. And we don't know realistically, based off of Fridays, it's just we've been, we've been closing at twelve, we made some changes about that. During peak periods and all that, but we don't know what the demand is on Fridays, we don't, we don't have a sense of what that really looks like. And I think that's something we need to think into consideration, because we do have to lose a comment on Friday, we might lose enough to support. And that, and we need to be available, you can't expect to be getting online, and so for me, all hours of operation has to be examined this year. To make sure it's consistent for next fall, but also make sure we're managing the students, if we don't know what it looks like. Then we got to start collecting data so we can have that.
Right.
But we don't know, but right now, everything from my perspective is on the table, and I would let the board know as a race to the operational decision. Regardless of hours of operation for the next fall, but there will be changes.
Thank you, sorry to be negligent, I'm just. I'm always doing this stuff now. Oh, yeah.
Is there any other question? Moving on to item sixteen, Dr. Curry, board policy.
These are updated board policies and mission releases for the district, if anybody has any questions or concerns about board policy, do that, you know? So she got home, you had two questions, I think.
It's sixteen oh nine, right? And. Oh, derogatory communications.
This is a, one of board policies that people are able to submit, uh, we made some updated changes, put in that, and also C C Ls, there was a C C Ls policy. But this is one of the things that we had with the board previously that was connected to. Uh, one of the other board policies for the district, and so this is the policy that we had, we have not received a take in this area. Uh, before, but this is another opportunity, and it connects to one of board policies.
Okay, I, I know what I was looking at, where it says the A, B, C, and D not included in this regulation are. So these are the four, the A, B, C, and D that are not part of the derogatory communications, correct? If I read it right, so I don't know.
Yes, yes, correct.
So I'm just, is there a reason you had to put A, B, C, and D in here?
Because there are different processes for that.
Okay, okay, yeah. And if you didn't put it that in there, somebody would ask why it's not in there. Okay, I got it, thank you.
Because what could happen is someone could file to the board, something that's related to these, where you already have another process, that's off one of the board policies.
Okay. And then I had some on sixteen ten, but you can forget it, cause you answered my question, it's all about the.
I think you also had, just wanna make sure this, I'm just coming back on you, please, you also had, um, seven, oh, yeah, I got to you, sorry.
Yeah.
That's all for the board policy, initiative.
Moving on to item seventeen, any other item?
Yeah, so in your board, uh, in the board agenda, uh, in alignment with our board policy. Uh, we have the updated, um, board meeting schedule, uh, and that's just as information I have for you. Because the board group, the board meetings will be moved back to the board, uh, beginning April twenty first. That's a great thing, that is important, uh, we also have the board trustees revise goals. These were the board approved those at the last meeting, and the trustee Calhoun, he had a statement about the, uh, kind of about seventy one zero three. And there was a board business statement that the board created with another vision in your team at your last meeting.
Right, um, I really like this, um. The Compton Community College District Board of Trustees dedicated to creating and supporting a fair educational environment. That enables all stakeholders to learn and succeed, ensuring lasting impact and progress for years to come. Except when it comes to a great change. I like that, sorry. I, I won't let it go, y'all, I'm sorry, it'll be my last time. That's it.
Uh, also included in the, just a couple of updates for you, we included an update or a master plan, we also have a W. Uh, I don't even remember the state update of where we're at there, uh, we also have the, of item seventeen point one zero. We provided an update on the budget development process, uh, this March, we've worked in on our updated private fiscal management plan. And presented that to the planning budget committee, the council, and we also will, we made updates to our withdrawal schedule. Which the board of trustees approved this evening. Next month, we have a board workshop for the budget, and also we have some goals for twenty five, twenty six year for Compton. Um, the other thing I do wanna bring forward to the board is that at next board meeting, I have to bring back the measure C C bottom budget. And for twenty, twenty two thousand two, and we will also bring forward the bottom budget for measure C C two thousand twenty four. Because we wanna make sure the board is aware of what we're doing in those two spaces, so those will be two buses brought for next month. You also have an update on student housing, uh, we're, I mean, I'm putting track weeks, we're in week fourteen of the student housing construction. There's a lot of work that's being done, I've never seen that packing equipment out for our campus before, with all something they're doing. So they have a lot going on, but we're in week fourteen, and uh, it looks, it's, it's going very, very well for us, but you have to skip it there. You also have the update on the task force, uh, present CEO task force updates, you also have seventy one two one, which is, uh, the last set of updates. I, I included two letters of support. One for Assembly Bill three thirty five, Black Service Teaching Grant Program, and also Assembly Bill three two three. Which is associated with the uh, Stolen Workforce Program, work-based learning, where you'll be able to use the stolen workforce dollars to support internships. And apprenticeships paid for student work, for students. Uh, also to you, you have a board of trustees protection report schedule, uh, also which is to highlight the, uh, if this is a question of trustee Calhoun's. Uh, series of questions regards to the bond oversight committee, we're actually here on recruitment for the new bond oversight committee. We've been extending invitations to current members, we have a couple of not responded, hopefully get their commitment in the next couple of days. Uh, but we do have advertising out, interpress telegram, a lot of ping pong, and a copy bulletin, also our website. We accept the applicants, if you know anyone that might be interested in your district, who had served on the bond oversight committee, please let us know, because we're trying to. Who had served on the bond oversight committee, please let us know, because we're trying to, uh, FPC them as people. And that's going to be the information.
Moving on to. Item eighteen, future agenda items, Dr. Currie.
Yes, so next month, we have a presentation on the Association of the Government. We have a budget workshop. We have the twenty five to six goals, and we'll also have updated.
Moving on to item nineteen, oral reports, Dr. Curry.
I just want to provide a couple of things this past weekend. I was in Monterey with the California Community College. Here we go, the California, we have a CEO, supposed to. Uh, for all the CEOs got together to, uh, talk about their issues. A lot of concerns were, were made regardless of federal government and what's happening nationally. As one of the board committees, Austin, that's true, though, we're running to that very closely. I've been sending out communications to, uh, managers regards to the Valentine Day that we see from, uh, Department of Education. And we have another communication going out this evening regards to, we're going to be doing a website, um. Review on our campus, reviewing all the websites, asking for the managers to make sure the websites are in compliance. With the Department of Education. Now, goals to have that reviewed by the managers by April first, by our internal deadline, April first. There's a lot of conversation about that. There's also a lot of conversation about the state budget. And it's understanding of the state budget, uh, might land, uh, this next year. I feel good about where we're at in schools for the district, but we will be making some, uh, we'll be making some reductions in some areas. Just as we look at the future, just to make sure that we're getting more efficient and pro-dollar. And that will be included in our budget that we're moving forward. Also want to announce on April first. We will have our, uh, we have our ice cream social, a years of service event for employees, and that will be from twelve to two o'clock. In the, uh, multi-purpose room. So really excited, and I say that to add to the resources put on, uh, in support of our employees. Also want to bring to the board attention, as according to my newsletter, we have the passport to your career job there. Uh, which is happening on, uh, March twenty sixth, there is from ten to two o'clock PM. And we're really excited about that work that the board is able to finish paying, as we all know. Also, on the March nineteenth, we have an event where it is actually happening because of our best set of meetings. Where, uh, Congresswoman Maxine Waters will be here, uh, during meeting with students and also invited, she invited community members too. But that's from two thirty till three thirty in the Little Theater. And so she decided to be here. Any board members that are able to attend, please, that you know, I will introduce, uh, Maxine, Congresswoman Maxine Waters for this event. There's an open conversation for her to have with the community. And although she's excited, the team is excited about this. And that concludes my. The job there is March twenty sixth from ten AM until two o'clock.
That's you?
That's you, okay. In the quad area.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll sit a fire out and get to the board of trustees.
And the ice cream is April the first?
April first from twelve o'clock, two o'clock in the multi-berge.
Well, for two years.
Proceeds on it.
Um, first and foremost, I want to say, um. I am very overwhelmed with a lot of the departments here. Um, they are not doing their job as far as servicing. Um, I know we always say, and Dr. Curry is the, the headline for this. Who do we do it for? We do it for the students. So if we're gonna keep saying that, let's make sure that we're actually doing it for the students. And not just saying it, and not putting no, no steps behind it. Because it's kind of getting a little, um, out of hand, if you want to be honest. Um, so some of my reports. I am sitting on the committee with a, a, a lot of student trustees. We are writing compositions right now for the transition of, um, the new, um, uh, student trustee that, that will be coming in. Um, so that's something that I have been working with for the, uh, some student trustee from, um, El Camino College and Cerito College. Um, other than that, um, Dr. Curry, you already know how I'm feeling right now with everything that's going on right now at Compton. Uh, I am not pleased with it at all. I speak very high about Compton. I always try to, you know, your brandy points, but right now, I'm just not happy. Students are not happy. And that's my order of report. We need to do better. We need to do better with servicing. Um, I know you do your daily walks, and I'm so happy for you, but sometimes you need to do a daily walk into these departments. And go see where they, where the pros and cons and how we can do better in servicing as well.
Moving on to board trustees, trustee Calhoun.
Did you need my time to finish up because I'm kind of on family?
Yes, financial aid. I think the whole financial aid system needs to be revised. I know what time we're in. I, I know what time we're in with funding. I'm not here to talk about where's the money, where's the money. Y'all have not been sitting on this in my seat talking about where's the money. Now, for financial aid, it's, it's just terrible, the things that they're doing. Out there, not answering the phones. This is a place of business, and you go a week without answering the phone for students is ridiculous. It's very ridiculous. They just need to be better.
I said my stuff about the great change, so I'm done.
Let's see, Lopez?
I have nothing to complain about.
And no report for you. Moving on to item twenty, the next February schedule is board meeting, April twenty first. Close session begins at five PM. Open session begins at six PM. And our meeting is now adjourned at three zero seven.